I'd like to call to order the School Board to Seminole County's Board Meeting for July 26, 2016. And it's with a heavy heart, again, I must start a meeting by sharing that we have lost another vital family member in our Seminole County Schools' family. Mr. Mark Drucker was a beloved educator in Seminole County. His passion for teaching, love of students and camaraderie with his colleagues contributed to the success of the schools he served and the district as a whole. Mr. Drucker will be missed by those who were blessed enough to have known him throughout his educational career. And let me share with you that I think the titles that he wore most proudly, other than teacher, was that of a Christian, a father, a husband, and a friend. And I'm proud to call him a friend. He was first hired into Seminole County Public Schools at Seminole High School where he was voted from his peers to be the Teacher of the Year for that entire school, the largest school in Seminole County, in only his third year here. And then subsequently was named the High School Teacher of the Year for all of Seminole County. He then transferred to Greenwood Lakes Middle School, then to Teague, then to Lake Mary High School, and this year was to start at Rock Lake Middle School. We have lost a true friend to education, and I was honored to attend his celebration of life the other day where there were many students, teachers, and colleagues who shared what an impact he had on their lives. We have truly lost a good friend to Seminole County. If you'd all please join me now in a moment of silence. Thank you so very much. Well, it's hard to segue, but we must. I am honored to share an invocation and the pledge with you here this evening. And believe it or not, this is our last School Board meeting before the first day of school. It seems like to many of us, we haven't had a minute off because, as many of you do know, our team works tirelessly, year-round, to ready for a new school year. But I thought I'd share this short story by Elena Fox with you entitled "First Days." Think back to some of your most memorable first days. We have so many first days in our lives that it would be impossible not to remember at least one. Your first day of school, your first day in a new place, or on a new team, your first day of marriage, first day at a new job, first day of being a parent. First days are milestones in our lives. They mark the beginning of a new experience or journey. They're also filled with mixed emotions. They can be a little frightening as we step into the unknown, but they can also inspire us as they give us fresh hope for a bright future. The principle here is that first days are powerful, and we can use them as a turning point in our lives. If we have made some mistakes, we can use our first days as new beginnings to leave the past behind and learn from it as we start over. If we have had success, we can build on it and make it stronger. First days give us an opportunity to grow and change and become a better person. The principle applies to both the way we see ourselves and the way we view others. As we extend grace to others, we give them a first-day chance to start over, to leave the past behind, and to create a new future. This principle applies to everyone, but is especially true for teachers. As teachers, we are guaranteed at least one first day a year. A new school year, a new class, a new experience teaching. And we also have an opportunity to give each student in our class a life-changing first-day experience, a chance to make a fresh start, to leave past mistakes and failures behind, and begin a new and better life in school. I am here to wish, on behalf of the entire School Board, a fantastic first day for all of our students, families, teachers, administrators, and staff because we do have a brighter future ahead of us. If you'd all please rise and join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let the record reflect that all School Board members are in attendance. Mr. Bauer is attending telephonically. Madam Clerk, do we have any PTA or BAB representatives here this evening? Seeing none, Dr. Griffin, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have four. The Addendum for Good Cause is marked on our electronic agenda by a green flag-named addendum item. And I'm going to be pulling three items. We're going to pull Item 4-V. This is the agreement with OC, High Speed Production Printing Systems from Cannon Solutions America, Inc. Going to pull Item 4-A-D. It's an MOU with the YMCA for after-school opportunities. And I'm going to pull Item 4-A-J, voluntary insurance for plan year 2017.
Thank you. And Board members, do we have any items for removal, separate consideration, or clarifying questions? Vice Chairman Lockhart.
Clarifying questions on both 4-T and 4-A, Ephesian Frank.
Thank you. Member Almond?
No ma'am.
Member Schaffner?
Comment on 4-K and 4-S, as in Sam.
Member Bauer, do you have any clarifying questions? We'll try to get that connection back before we vote. And I would like to ask Vice Chairman Lockhart to represent the Board on Item 4-K, RFP, and on Item 4-O. Mrs. Schaffner, if you could represent the Board on that RFP, I'd appreciate it. At this point in time, ask for approval of the agenda outline. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion, second. Any questions or further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, do we have any presentations or recognitions?
Yes, we do.
Board members, I'm really happy to present to you tonight the new principal of Bearlake Elementary School, Jenny Brilliard. Jenny, if you would come on down. Jenny earned her Bachelor's Degree in Music Education from the University of Florida and her Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from Nova Southeastern University. She has served as a middle school teacher at Milway, Jackson Heights, and Indian Trails, and an Assistant Principal at Greenwood Lakes, Winter Springs High School, Teague Middle School, Lake Mary Elementary School, and of course, most recently, at Bearlake Elementary School, where she is now the proud principal at Bearlake. With her tonight is her husband, Don Brilliard. They've been married for 30 years. Don, why don't you stand up and be recognized? Congratulations, Jenny.
Dr. Griffin and School Board members, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Sanya Smith, the new Assistant Principal at Sanford Middle School. Sanya Smith attended Kent State University in Kent, Ohio, and received a BA in Pan-American Studies. She then became a Knight at UCF and received a Master's in Curriculum and Instruction and Educational Specialist in Leadership. Her journey began in education in 2004. She's been a teacher, instructional coach, dean, and program administrator. Joining her today, if you would stand, is her two twins, sons, Savion and Sydney, her friends from previous schools, and her sorority sisters. Thank you for coming. And we have a second middle school. It gives me great pleasure, again, Dr. Griffin and School Board members, to introduce to you Breezy Erickson, the new principal at Greenwood Lakes Middle School. Breezy began her education 19 years ago. She's benefited from experiencing her work, from working in elementary, middle, and high schools. She has a love of learning and joy of working with students, teachers, and parents. Joining her today, if you all could stand, is her husband, John Erickson, her two sons, Colton and Connor, and I'm almost sure I saw her mother here. If her mom is here, would you stand too? Thank you and welcome, Breezy.
Dr. Griffin and School Board members, it's my pleasure to introduce our newest high school administrator, Lake Mary High School's Ms. Ally Hilliard. Ally first arrived at Lake Mary High School four years ago, in 2012. Prior to that, she was teaching in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, at Sacastee High School, which is actually her alma mater. At Sacastee, she received the award of Teacher of the Year and top-five finalist for Teacher of the Year for the county, Ori County. She is a National Board Certified Teacher. When Ally arrived at Lake Mary, she taught AP Lang, English II Pre-AP, and English II. She also took over the ETF role and changed it over to a digital learning coach leader role, where she played a huge instrumental role in transforming Lake Mary's school-wide effort for blended learning. With her tonight are her husband Reed, a 1994 graduate of Lake Mary High Schools. Please stand. Also, her son Sawyer and daughter Savannah, who are both students at Woodlands Elementary School. Also in the audience, her principal, Mr. Michael Kotkin.
Board members, Dr. Griffin, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our newest ESS Administrator, Ms. Felicia Naidoo. Felicia started her career in Seminole County Public Schools in 2006 as an ESE teacher at Sanford Middle School. She spent six years with her Sanford family and then transitioned as dean to Lake Mary High School, where she ended up as an Assistant Principal at Oviedo High School, where she was responsible for ESE, World Language, and ESOL Departments. Felicia is a graduate from the University of Florida and is excited about her new endeavor. Her family members with her this evening is Mom, Margot, her fiance, Roscoe, her nephew, please stand, please, her nephew, Adrio, and her aunt, Robin.
Dr. Griffin, members of the Board, as you are aware, we have combined two departments. The Risk Management Department and Employee Benefits Department are now the Benefits and Insurance Services Departments. We've got a twofer here. I'm happy to introduce Lauren Haddix as the new director of both of those departments, that new department. She has a degree from University of Central Florida, Bachelor's of Arts degree with major in Journalism and a minor in Legal Studies. I would like to ask her family members to stand as I call her name. Her parents are here, Michaeline Santiago, I hope I pronounced that correctly, Damatilo Santiago, her aunt, Noreen Stasco, her sister, Andrea Santiago, husband Jason Haddix by FaceTime, and her nephew and niece Nicholas and Hannah Santiago.
Wow, we have a lot of new people, don't we?
That's a lot of good news.
Go say welcome to everybody. That means we really are starting the school year, Dr. Calderon. My goodness. This evening's focus on student achievement is to share with the Board and our public the results of the Florida Standards Assessments that we took this past spring. As always, we have some proud evidence of the work that we're doing, and also some areas of concern, and some work that we know we need to do. And it's just as important that we share that with the Board, as well as what we think we're doing well. Ms. Thompson is going to start with an overview of the school grades. As you know, our Board and Superintendent were very vocal about their concern for releasing last year's incomplete grades as letter grades. And so, again, when our public sees that kind of information, they form a perception of what that means. This year, the formula changed again, and learning gains are included in our grades. And that had, as you know, a significant impact on how our schools have been labeled. So Kelly will talk about the grade distribution, and then I'd like to go over the district grade calculation, as well as talk a little bit about direction from the Superintendent to address the areas of concern.
Good evening, Board members. The tables in front of you are summary data for our school grades for 2016. Just a little bit more detail to add. For our elementary schools, six of our elementary schools maintained an A from the 2015 baseline grade to the 2016. So six maintained an A, two maintained a B. We had 10 schools that fell from an A to a B. We had three schools, or I'm sorry, six schools who fell from a B to a C, three from an A to a C, five of them maintained a C, two fell from a C to a D, one maintained a D, and one fell from a D to an F. As we look at the changes for elementary school and those impacts. For middle school, we had two element, two middle schools that fell from an A to a B in their middle school grades. And for our high schools, three of our high schools maintained an A, four of our high schools fell from an A to a B, and one fell from an A to a C. We have two schools that received grades of incomplete that we are in the process of appealing now based upon issues with percent tested, that we hope to have the school grades released as soon as that appeal window closes.
And Kelly's label for last year was a baseline is the DOE label. This year is a baseline because this year is the first year that we're experiencing the algorithm for the learning gains. And we don't know how that really is going to work and provide evidence of student proficiency. So truly, this is the baseline year when we have the whole formula in front of us. But Kelly referenced, from the department's perspective, last year was the baseline, even though this year is a different formula. Unfortunately, for the first time in Seminole County's history, we've dropped as a district from an A to a B. And that is not who we are, not, does it represent the work of our teachers or our students, or the commitments of our families and community? So it's very troubling to us that we dropped to a B. Let's look at some of the reasons for that. We were actually two points away from an A, so in any of these categories, had we earned two more points, we would have been an A. Where, depending on the calculation that you look at, seventh or eighth in the state, there are only three A districts left. That says a lot. None of them are our size, or do they have our diversity? So when we look at our achievement in English Language Arts, 62%, it's not, it's not what we want. We know we have a lot of work to do there, but we rank statewide fairly well in English Language Arts Achievement, as well as in Math Achievement. But let's go back to the English Language Arts learning gains. 54% made it a gain. So there's two ways to look at it, and I know this is how we're grappling with this. We expect all of our students to make one year's growth for one year's of instruction. Why wouldn't we? Every parent expects that, every teacher expects that. Part of that is in how that gain is determined. And as you know, the transparency of the system stops right here. The learning gain calculation is where there are lots of different variables that impact how a student is given credit for a gain. So with our learning gains for the lower quartile, 38% is unacceptable. These are our most, in some cases, not all, because we have some Level 3s in the, in the lower quartile at some schools. But for the most part, these are our students who need our support the most. Let's, let's continue, and then we'll talk about some strategies. Math achievement, again, we, overall, we ranked relatively high in these areas. Math learning gains, again, we're not pleased with that, but is where we are. Look at the lower quartile in math. Again, 38 and 40 are not acceptable. And that, there's a lot of questions that we have with our instructional plans, our curriculum, our professional development. We have a lot of questions about how to improve how we're serving students. Science achievement, we had a little bit of a problem at elementary and at high school with some of our science scores, so we, we anticipated doing much better in that area. We didn't. We have to figure out why. Social studies, middle school acceleration, grad rate, good job. Celebration points, we want to remember that. And then college and career acceleration. And I know we shared with the Board that that metric changed this year. Prior to this year, it was a duplicated count. So we received credit for students based on how many AP classes they were taking, how many dual enrollment courses they were enrolled in. This year, it switched to an unduplicated count. So now it doesn't matter how many courses, and you know we have a lot of students that take two to six APs. Sometimes I see kids with 12 AP courses, and you know, it's just unbelievable. But from this point forward, unless there's a change by the legislature, it's unduplicated. And that really caught us by surprise. Districts that had a lot of career and technical education in the past, we know Dr. Weisong, Dr. Griffin have been working on that, and that's improving on a, almost minute-by-minute basis. But this metric is from 1415. So it was what it was, and we did not perform well comparatively. Next year's metric in that cell will be from the current graduating class that you all graduated in May. We can't change that. It's already done, and it doesn't look too much better than this. We haven't seen all of our CTE data yet, but we, we don't anticipate, we hope, but from what we've looked at, at least preliminarily, we shouldn't see too much of a bump there. And so our overall total points earned, you can see that kept us two points away from the A, and so our district grade is B. For the learning gain challenge that's before us, Dr. Griffin called us together to do a deep dive, and Kelly's team put together an amazing set of data points that we really had to look at. And they worked us through those data points, as well as clarifying the formulas for learning gains. And maybe at an upcoming work session, that would be great for us to, because there's really not time at a board meeting, but for us to go through what that learning gain calculation looks like, and how you go diagonal, or how you go vertical, and if you're here, and if you don't, and this one's a plus-one, but this one isn't a plus-one, and it just goes on and on and on. And it's important because the Governor asked for transparency. I think it's pretty tough to explain that to parents. So we'll talk to you about that. But Dr. Griffin has challenged the principals, as well as each of the cabinet members, to own a school and to work with that school one-on-one to help support making sure at least 80%, at least 80% of our students in the lower quartile make an annual learning gain. So we want to thank you for all the support that you give us, you continue to give us, for the trust that you place in us, and know that we are relentless about figuring this out and making sure we represent what the students in Seminole County do. So thank you, Board members, for the opportunity to share this.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Almond?
Kelly, when you get a response on the two incompletes, does that have the potential to change the district grade?
No ma'am. The, the data for Lyman High School and Seminole County Public Schools included already in the district grade.
Thank you. Any other, Mrs. Lockhart?
So you all know what I think about school grades. So we talked about that earlier today. So I'm less concerned about the grade that's been attached to our individual schools because I'm, I'm not confident in the metrics that are used to assign those grades. And I'm, and I, and the fact that, that they go back afterward and they set cut scores to determine, because they've, they've already said they're going to have a certain percent of schools are going to be As, Bs, Cs, Bs. So even if, even if you are the highest level achieving, at some point in time, somebody's going to be in the middle of that bell curve, or the bottom of that curve. So I, the whole concept is just atrocious.
Well, that's assuming the assessment is valid and reliable. We still haven't proved that.
Absolutely. I mean, all that. So if, if you all are sitting here saying that you, as, as administrators and as principals and teachers, are concerned about what you think is happening in our classrooms that we can improve, I care about that. I care a lot less about the grade itself. That's just me. I know we have perception issues. I know it's hard to explain to the community. I think it's, it's, you know, interesting that the Governor has asked for transparency. We'd like transparency too.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm frustrated for you and for our teachers and for our students who I know work so hard, and, and the, and the goalposts keep getting moved further down the field for them. And so I hope in your conversations and as we have these discussions publicly, that we're not unintentionally sending a message to our parents and to our students and teachers that we are somehow disappointed in them. I, I've heard some feedback, particularly on social media, parents saying, you know, Seminole County has been a leader, and standing up there and saying that you, you don't believe the test is valid and reliable, you're not comfortable with the way that the grades are being handed out, and yet, yet you pat yourselves on the back when you get however many As, or you get how, and it, it does seem disingenuous. And so I think we have to be really careful about our messaging on, on both ends. I don't want to beat people up too badly, but at the same time, I don't, I just, I feel like every time we talk about the grades, we're lending credence to them like they mean anything. That's just me.
I concur, and I think, Dr. Cody, you said it best, that we're going to focus on the student, because that's what we're here for. We're here for what's right for students, and what can we do to support the great teaching that occurs in the classrooms every day. These labels really isn't important, other than communication vehicles for certain entities. And we know it's something you can't put in a soundbite on a 10-second TV interview because if somebody's moving in from out of state, they don't know the difference between an A and a B, because they don't know how many pockets in the algorithm need to be jumped through to achieve that letter grade. And so I agree with you that it, it's not a short conversation to have. So if we just spend our energies and our time and our investments in quality teaching and learning, that's what we have to do at the end of the day. And I am sure with your leadership, that will occur this year. So let us know when you uncover things if we, as a Board, can help. Mrs. Schaffner?
And I would say, this is a chance for us to look at where we need to really focus, especially in this lower quartile. And I know- And I know how much we do with data, good night, we use it all the time, but it's a great opportunity for us to continue to use that and to do a deep dive and say, you know, this is where we need to focus, da-da-da, whatever it may be. So I am in complete agreement with what they're saying. The grade is not as important as, let's use this data and determine where we're going from here. And, you know, I, I know that the standards have changed and all that, but it's, it is an opportunity for us to focus and see where we are, where we need to refocus in the future.
Mr. Bauer?
Yes, I would just say, I think the grades are important. I may not agree with how they were. The assessment that led to the grade, the percent, the public perception is what is, what is important. And when, when a school like Sterling Park goes from an A to a C school, that has an impact on the morale of our staff, morale of the community, the morale ultimately of
I think if I could paraphrase what I thought I heard Mr. Bauer say, is that he's concerned from some schools, perception becomes reality in the community or the teachers, that when a school goes from an A to a C, you know, what has changed? And I can only speak for myself, but I know overnight, all of the teachers and students didn't drop. It, it's just the, the algorithm was changed, and I've visited Sterling Park numerous times this school year, and there's great things going on in those classrooms. So, you know, I don't have the fear, but I know many of you have received emails over the past week from residents around the county that are saying, what's going to happen to my property values now that the schools around me used to be an A and now it's a C? And we don't know. We don't have a crystal ball. But the more that we have these transparent conversations with residents and people selling and buying homes, I think they'll come to the same conclusion we have, that we do have quality teachers and quality students in every single school. Ms. Schaffner?
But we are up to the challenge. If anybody can meet that challenge at Seminole County Public Schools, we've got outstanding teachers, we've got kids that are eager to learn, we've got great parent support. If anybody can turn this around, we can. No question about it.
Ms. Lockhart?
Something that I know we've done on a regular basis, but I'm not sure when the next time is we'll be doing it, is meeting with our realtors. I think it's so important that we keep a constant line of communication open with them about this, because we do have so many people moving in from out of the area. I had a conversation the other day with a family that was, had recently moved here from Pennsylvania, and they were very concerned, they're in the, one of the regions, and they were concerned about the school that they were assigned to and the grade. And I said, well, let me talk to you about Florida school grades. Are you familiar with how they're calculated? Well, no, but it can't be good. Okay, so forty-five minutes later, we had had a conversation about the way school grades are calculated in Florida. So it, it, if, and the problem is, in that situation, the reason I brought up the realtors is that they didn't, they thought that, they didn't realize they were in a region school. They just assumed that they were going to be going to the school that was closest to their home. And, and well, my realtor didn't tell me that. And I was like, well, you know, we, we need to proactively seek them out so that they have all of the information.
Dr. Griffin, could you perhaps contact Aura and see what their schedule looks like? I know normally they like to have, once a year, an annual State of the Union address from both Orange County and Seminole County schools. And I know Mr. Lawrence has some great, you know, information that we can share, whether it's the app or other means that realtors can better assist their purchasers and...
But let's take them to one of the schools.
We usually take them on quite a few of the schools.
Absolutely, yeah. But I think that's a great thing to do, because then they get to see firsthand, you know, I don't, I don't know why this is graded like that. For heaven's sakes, this looks like a great school, and it is. So, yeah.
Great. Point well taken. Thank you. Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, I just want to publicly thank you from our work session. We had a discussion about this. And, you know, Seminole County is not about complaining. And I appreciate you continuing to support our GED students, our most, most at-risk students. There's no, there's no need for you to do that, other than doing the right thing for students. And I also appreciate you allowing us to continue to let students who are ready for Algebra I and Geometry Middle School to continue to do that, because that's what you're talking about, is taking care of each individual student. What we're going to be focused on is one year's growth in one year for every single student, and the numbers will fall the way the numbers will fall. But we have to, at night, every time we, every night we go home, we have to make sure we are doing everything for every student to make sure they get that one year's growth. And that's what we're going to be focused on. I sent to all of you the assignments of the cabinet, who's going to be in charge of what school. And that, and we're, we're not going in to raise the ruckus, we're going in to help them. We'll look at the data, I'll tell you, we'll probably learn more from them than they'll learn from us, but it's us lending that support and being there. Many of us have been principals, can look at things that we worked on, and I think it will be well-received once we get engaged and working with everybody. But that's what we're about, is just supporting everybody. So thank you for your support.
And I think our role in this is to be sure that these schools have the resources they need...
Yes.
...to meet the goal for every student.
That's right. And if you looked at the list, you know, they're not, there's, there's schools from high to low SES, because we really looked at comparable schools and learning gains, you know, for all students. So we have, we have our work cut out for us. This being a baseline year, I look forward to the improvement for next year.
Seminole County can do it.
That's right.
Moving on to our consent agenda, Mrs. Lockhart, you had a question or comment on four F as in Frank?
Four T and four AF.
Oh, I'm sorry.
AF, okay.
Four T was on the Vista Agreement, and I know this is something that, I think, I think, do we have two different Vista Agreements? One with UCF and one with United Way?
That's correct.
Okay. So my, one of my concerns is that in the, talking about this, these four people, whoever they are, that are going to be responsible for coordinating these volunteers and gathering volunteers, and these four schools that have been identified here are critical schools in our district, that we have the absolute best, brightest, most wonderful people in fulfilling these roles. Two bullet points on page two ninety-five concern me a little bit, that this volunteer, this Vista Volunteer Coordinator's primary responsibilities include developing and managing the volunteer screening process, and developing and implementing appropriate volunteer training. Who, who chooses these four people? And what, what, what role do we have in telling the, I don't know. I, I'd like to, I'd like to know some more about this.
Absolutely. And yes, this is the United Way Vista Program. And so the United Way recruits these Vistas, volunteers in service to America, kind of like the Peace Corps Group, where these people agree to work in a community service-oriented role for a very minimal wage, as part of giving back to their, to their country and to their community.
So they're getting paid?
They do get paid by the United Way, yes.
They're volunteers?
Yes, but they get a stipend to live on because they have no other employment.
Okay.
So...
The stipend is not much.
It's not much. I want to say like twelve hundred a month or some, something minimal that they get. The Vista is then assigned to a school. If there's any problem, that the principal doesn't feel comfortable with that Vista, then we, they're, the principal will contact me, I'll work with Joan Nelson at United Way, and we make a reassignment. We've had Vistas from the United Way probably for five to six years, and for the most part, they've done a great job recruiting mentors into the community and supporting the work that the school principal has prioritized. The United Way provides the training for their Vistas, for their mentoring program, so they do all of that. Our, we invest in a space for them to sit, we let them use a computer and have access to a phone, and they're on campus the same hours as regular employees. We have a Vista right now at Pinecrest, and I know if you had a chance to talk with Mr. Augusto, I, I have, he's very grateful, and we made sure that that Vista is going to stay there. They're our most at-risk school. They will provide up to four Vistas. Sometimes they, they can't recruit the quality staff that they want as well, so we may not get all four. It'll be up to four. And we can prioritize where we'd like them assigned. But as I said, if there's any problem, if the Vista has a problem, they go to Ms. Nelson. If our principal has a problem, they let me know. And we, we have had a situation where we had to make a switch, and they were very open to doing so. I think the other part, Ms. Lockhart, that I recall from some of the other Vista conversations were explicit deliverable agreement. So we worked on that, and that's why we included the Pinecrest deliverables. And if we do get other Vistas, they'll have very similar deliverables. So we're trying to make sure that we're accountable to them, but they're accountable for fulfilling their obligations as well.
Great. That was my second question.
Well, and if I could add on, because I think part of your question perhaps wasn't totally discussed, but that of screening volunteers and training. And the Vista that was at another elementary school last year, I worked very closely with, because I was recruiting a lot of mentors to that school, and actually, our community involvement department, MISA, came and did the training for all the volunteers. And obviously, they all had to go through our dividends, and if they were going to be a one-on-one mentor, they went through our fingerprint process. So it's still owned through the district, at least it was last year, as far as...
Yes.
...the training for volunteers and the background checks through our computer system. We're not, we didn't let...
For, for the mentors that are recruited, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. The Vistas are trained by United Way?
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I was, I was wondering how the Vistas were training these volunteers that they were bringing in, because that, that to me was too many layers down the...
Right, yes. MISA does that training.
Okay. Great.
Thank you. And, Mrs. Schaffner, you had questions on four K and S?
Yes, I don't have a question. I just had a comment that I am so delighted that we are reopening Longwood Elementary School. Since we announced that first at the county commission meeting with Longwood, I mean, city commission meeting with Longwood, as I've been traveling around, I've had several people comment on it. I was on the board when we had to close Longwood Elementary, and that was painful, painful. But we had to cut something like twenty million dollars from our budget, and that's the reason it happened. But I ran into a teacher who used to teach there, she's now teaching at one of our other schools, and she said, is it really true? Are we going to reopen Longwood? And I said, absolutely. And she said, I want to go back there and teach again. So it was a real community school, and I'm just thrilled, and I hope we get that grant that we're talking about for the pre-IB program for elementary level. I think it's wonderful. I'm very happy over that. Just, I just wanted to comment on it.
And just for the record, with or without the grant, we're still going to open the school.
Absolutely.
But with the grant, we'll move toward the primary years program.
Absolutely.
And Mrs. Lockhart, you also had a question or comment on AF?
Did Mrs. Schaffner?
That was me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I put AF.
The, that's on page, that's about the SAT that we're going to be giving that. It's the agreement with the college board. And my concern is, we're talking about, we're going to do tenth grade PSAT, completely agree, eleventh grade, no, SAT, but now we're talking about the twelfth grade graders taking SAT, too. And I would like to see that as an option, rather than mandatory. I just feel like this testing is such an issue, I hear it everywhere I go. And if, if we've got students who want to take it again, I have absolutely no problem with that, but I don't want every, every senior to have to take the SAT again. If they don't want to, they can opt out.
Yeah, actually, Ms. Schaffner, it's not mandatory. We, we don't have it in writing that they have to take it or, or must participate in it. It's just a great opportunity for them to be able to take it.
Oh, I completely agree.
So a student, a student could actually choose not to participate in it. In the spring, when we did the juniors, we had very few, if any, who actually did not participate because it was such a great opportunity. So that's already kind of outlined in what we're doing, that it's not a mandatory-type testing. We don't want to compare it to, right now, to a state testing where it's mandatory, you don't graduate. It is simply a great, we sell it as a great opportunity for the students to be able to take it. So that's already in what we practice.
Good. I appreciate that. I just, it was a concern. I just wanted to mention it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Lockhart, AF.
Talking about our agreement with the Health Department and the Health Services Program, it seems like lately we've had a lot of opportunities to reevaluate our relationship with the Health Department, and figuring out exactly who's responsible for what and how different things are divvied up. And, and what stood out to me in this contract on page three fifty-five, number four, that first paragraph cites sections of Florida statute and the Florida Administrative Code and says, "The local Department of Health must..." And it outlines letters A through I of things that the local Health Department is required by Florida statute or Florida Administrative Code to do. And I recognize some of these things as being things that we do as a school district. So I talked with Dr. Walsh about it, because I, I have a feeling that we're at the point, maybe in our relationship with the Health Department, where we need to take a step back and look at a more holistic approach, get back to the basics of who's supposed to do what. And, and then if we need to have a memorandum of understanding or agreement on some of these issues, we can do that. But Dr. Walsh, maybe you could share the, a little bit of the conversation that we had about these various items and why we do them and how we're reimbursed or not for them?
Yes, ma'am. We do have an agreement. The Department of Health and Department of Education have to work together because both parties benefit by having healthy students in school, students are achieving, and that's kind of why we have this partnership going on. We are supported by full-service grant. We get a, a certain dollar amount. This year, it's a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. They did have some reduction in their funding, and so we have a slight adjustment, not a huge adjustment, to our share of that. So that's one portion that they go ahead and provide us with some information. As far as the items on four and all the ones that you had mentioned, we discussed this. And I was asked the question, who actually performs all of these services? And quite honestly, it's through our department, the SSS department. We do the health screening for second grade, we do it for sixth grade, we do the vision hearing for kindergarten students entering, because, you know what, we need to find out if there's an issue before they arrive in school. So we do a lot of the items. I did share with Mrs. Lockhart, I was a principal for twelve years, and it has been practiced for the last, that I was aware of, that we always had our folks coming in, doing the screenings at the various grade levels and performing those, those kinds of tasks. A lot of what they do is, they help and assist us in taking that data and reporting it back to the DOE and the Department of Health. So that's the working relationship we have. Remember, Lockhart asked me to go ahead and revisit this and have a candid conversation about who's actually doing the work. And she also requested some data, as far as what would be the cost associated with the task that we currently do. So we're working on that as well.
I appreciate that. I just, I feel like with any of our partnerships, and we have, of course, an item later in the agenda talking about our SROs and SRDs, you know, it's great to work together and it's great to have projects that we can work with other community partners, but to have a complete and full understanding of what's our responsibility, what's their responsibility, and I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to pull the trigger yet, but I have a feeling maybe we're shouldering more of the burden financially than we should be at this point. And I think what really was the tipping point to, to make me want to look at this more holistically, was our conversation several months ago about the TEDAP. And, and the comments that were made by the folks from the Health Department, and in a phone conversation that I had, which I sort of made synopsis of at the board meeting, was that they just couldn't give the TEDAP anymore. They didn't have the resources, and they needed to have, they needed to have our schools be able to provide that to all the, to so many students, because they were just overrun, they didn't have the resources. And last weekend, they had, you know, a health fair at the Health Department, and, you know, come one, come all, prove that you're a Seminole County student, which our folks were there to man, to verify student enrollment, and guess what? They were given the TEDAP. So I just want this to, if we're really going to have a transparent relationship with them, let's have, let's put it all out on the table and see who's doing what and for how much.
Well, and I think that's important, too, because if it's written in statute that they must perform, usually there's a dollar amount tied to it. So I hate for their staff... So, I hate for their staff to be getting paid to supposedly be doing these action items, when indeed, it's the school board employees that are doing the action items that they've been charged with to do from the state. I know, Dr. Walsh, I sent you an email earlier this week. I happened to find out that a charity organization donated over $40,000 to our Health Department for students to have teeth sealants. And just knowing the industry, I would think it would be very hard for student families who would want that to drive to the Health Department to get it. So, I hated that they were being awarded the money and then it might fall on the schools to offer a facility to deliver the healthcare. So, I agree with you that we need to be transparent and work collaboratively and just make sure people aren't taking credit for action items that it's another entity's responsibility to carry out. Good point. Thank you.
Board members, I'd like to suggest, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, but at some point in time, I think we probably need to have a work session with the Health Department. There's a lot of different programs, things have changed. We really haven't had Dr. Jett sit with us and talk to us as a group. Maybe sometime in the fall, we'll try to have him come to the table. And let's put all these questions out there.
Good suggestion.
Yeah. Because I know we get phone calls from parents, and then when I contact our staff, they go, "Well, that's not us, it's the Health Department." But these parents, when they get letters, it doesn't look like it's Health Department because it comes home in a child's backpack.
Yeah, that's right.
So, they assume it's the school and it's us. So, we believe in local control, but we can only answer the questions that we're responsible for, not if it's another entity. Mr. Bauer, do you have any questions on the consent agenda or comments?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Dr. Griffin, do you have a motion?
That the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So, move?
Second.
There's a motion and second for the discussion or questions. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Motion carries unanimously. There are no student discipline hearing dispositions. At this point in time, we welcome the podium to anyone in the public who wishes to address the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to superintendent's report.
Okay, they are three read-only items, but in total transparency, since we just had a discussion, the Health Department Vaccine Program Update is one of those information items on page 532.
Moving on to board member comments or committee updates. Vice Chairman Lockhart?
None. Thank you.
Member Almond?
Yes. Caspary Chamber last month had the supervisor of elections speak. This month, on August the 3rd, they're going to have Charlie Walsh, President of HOPS International, Center for Organizational Leadership and Excellence. So, I'm looking forward to hearing that presentation. Children's Cabinet had Safe Kids present, and they talked about hypothermia and heat stroke in children. They also stated a fact that 50% of children under the age of five who die, die because of riding in a car without a car seat. So, it's very important to have your children properly secured when you're taking them or your grandchildren. And there are a lot of agencies in town, a lot of the Sheriff's Department and a lot of the police departments, who have people who will help you properly secure a working car seat. And it takes about 45 minutes to properly check it out and install it in your car so it's safe. Community Alliance met and that's, no actions were taken. We did not have a quorum. There are about five vacancies for that committee. We'll meet again October the 19th. We met at the Sheriff's Department. A lot of the law enforcement-type wraparound service agencies participate in that. And I had an opportunity to go into one of the professional development sessions for Power of You. Kudos to Shaun and that team. I went into reciprocal teaching and I was very impressed. There were elementary teachers and they're working together. So, that's my report.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Schaffner?
And I want to talk about one thing, and that's Power of You, because it is impressive. I went to the, it's going on, it's still going on, four different schools, Sanford Middle, Rocklake, Lyman, and Hagerty. And I asked, I asked Shaun to give me some of the information about it. There were 158 sessions being offered. Every teacher in this county had the opportunity to do this. Unique participants, 1,417 of our teachers took advantage of it. And duplicated participants, 3,730. And the, the sessions were outstanding. I got dragged into several of them. I didn't, I had to drag myself out because they were having such a good time in there. The classes were small enough that they had a lot of interaction. I went into one that they were, it was billed as, they had a better title than this, but as a beginning computer. And a teacher turned to me and she said, "I am so glad to be here." She said, "For once, this is a beginning class." And she said, "Usually, I'm sitting in these classes and all these people know how to run computers and I don't." And she said, "They always, or, you know, they need to be in an intermediate class, not where I am." She said, "I said, 'Well, we have listened to you because we've heard that we needed to differentiate between the skills of our teachers.'" And she said, "This has just been awesome." They, they were playing with B-bots, they were building robots. I mean, every class I went in was different. It was, they were having such a great time. But I think the best part of it is the interaction. If you're a math teacher or a science teacher at one middle school, you don't get to meet with the others, other teachers that teach the same thing you do at another school. And they, they were sharing ideas, they were having the best time. It was great. So, it was well worth the effort. Kudos to your team. I mean to tell you, they were doing an outstanding job.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Any comments?
Yes. Please.
When the first one is said.
I'd like to thank everybody for kind of making up the slack, my physical absence for the last three weeks. As many of you know, I had an incident, medical emergency about June 15th, and I've been kind of in rehab since then. I'm still undergoing physical therapy. I want to thank Dr. Griffin and my fellow board members and all of you who have kept me in your thoughts and prayers, and I ask that you continue to do so. And I will be back with you all hopeful.
Well, we will continue to keep you in our thoughts and prayers and look forward to having you back with us very, very soon. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Just real quick, I had the opportunity to attend PBAS this month. It was very lively discussion of how our community can come together in different ways with Uber. And so, we seem to be a national trendsetter, that other cities around the country are looking at public-private partnerships. And I know from an educational standpoint, we're always looking for public-private partnerships. And now the cities are doing that as well. When I attended the Avito Chamber meeting this month, it was a legislative delegation. And I just wanted to share with you that they were giving kudos to the quality of education here in Seminole County, and it was easy for them to support our legislative issues and share success stories that we have here locally. And Captain Francis, I want to give you a shout-out to thank you for taking over ensuring the quality of all our school resource officers, but also the safety and security of not only our students, but our employees. That workplace violence session the other week, I think, was very well worth every participant's time, and I know we'll continue to do that throughout the year at different job sites. Had the honor to attend with Dr. Griffin and many of you to the Longwood City Commission, and they're very supportive and thankful and look forward to working with us on the successful reopening of Longwood Elementary School. And also, last week, attended the Orlando EDC, had their annual reception here in Seminole County. And many business contacts that I had made and shared with staff that are looking to partner with us in different workplace opportunities. And I think it's doing us well to give our students more opportunities to intern at businesses and to have more businesses in our classroom to make sure education is relevant. And last Friday, I had the opportunity to support one of our teachers from Lyman High. Katie Folger was selected to go to UCF for the summer on a National Science Foundation grant in a math symposium, and I was just so proud of her. She presented her lesson plan in front of teachers, all the way from Brevard to Osceola and Rockstar, and proud to have her. And she was supported on a Friday, a non-workday, by her assistant principal and her math coach. So, it really showed how we are a family in Seminole County. She was the only teacher there that had three people from her district to support her in her lesson plan, and I think that was heartfelt. So, on behalf of the board team, thank you for a phenomenal summer of planning and leadership. Loved the Power of You training sessions, especially on prejudice, the University of Florida coaching session, that we've actually taken over ourselves with our own staff. And I think we've heard that loud and clear for years, that a lot of our teachers want to bring training local. They just didn't want to pay national consultants to go out. They felt that we had a lot of great stories to share, and boy, didn't we see it. And the last shout-out, because we talked about it quickly when we went through our session earlier today, but congratulations on a phenomenal summer school graduation. That always seems to be such an emotional day, because, you know, every single student that walked across the stage had a special story. And if we ever had the time to know each of those special stories, I think it'd just make us feel more proud of the teachers, the guidance counselors, and the principals that put in the extra effort to have a brighter future for those students that got to walk across the stage. Looking forward to filling the pool out at our newest high school pool. So, we look forward to supporting Mr. Casillo in that. And seeing no further business to come before this board, this meeting stands adjourned. Thanks, everybody.[1768.11]